Next item, please.
Oh, before we move on, can I add two things?
Sure.
Number one, that we have many of our student athletes who, from the Dearborn Student Athletes, but who are swimming through DRD that have qualified for states for next weekend. So I wanted to say congratulations to them, and my daughter is one of them. And then the other thing is, I just wanted to, I'm wearing this pink shirt today in support of one of our staff members. Ms. Sisti is an O.L. Smith educator, a coach, and a previous athletic director. Right now, she is going through a fight, for her health, and they are doing a fundraiser for t-shirts. So if you're interested in purchasing a t-shirt, it'd be greatly appreciated. She's fighting her fight like a champion that she is, and she has all of O.L. Smith and our district cheering for her. So just something to keep in your thoughts and prayers for her. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Finance Committee meeting, February 13th, 2023. Board Report 22 hyphen 90. Executive Session, Close Negotiations, February 13th, 2023. Board Reports 22 hyphen 91. Regular P-12 Meeting, February 13th, 2023. Board Report 22 hyphen 92. And Study Session, February 28th, 2023. Board Reports 22 hyphen 93. Make any recommended, sorry, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Barry, supported by trustee Dambrosio. Any corrections that have not already been submitted? Seeing none, can I attach unanimous roll? All right, so ordered. Next item?
Next, Special Reports. Cognia Accreditation Findings. Ms. Fatma Faraj and Dr. Sue Stevens.
Good evening, everyone. This year, we were due for renewing our accreditation by Cognia, formerly known as Advanced Ad. We've been going through the process since August of 2022, and today is the report about our findings, and we will receive the report a few weeks after that. I'm gonna give it to Dr. Stevens, who led our accreditation for this round, and she will go over the report. Thank you to Cognia, because really their findings and powerful practices that they identify for us and opportunities for improvements are used as valid drivers for our next steps. I'm gonna give it to Dr. Stevens. Thank you.
All, once again, Dearborn, you are a leader in this state. I'm not sure if everyone is aware of, I want to first of all, make sure everyone can hear me.
We can hear you.
You are first in Michigan, once again. Just to let you know, you are the first to go through this new process and new protocol. I also want to thank my team, all four of us, who are Michigan Regional Accreditation Evaluators, had the pleasure of reviewing all of your evidence and all of your practices, and it's our recommendations that you're going to be hearing about this evening. The other thing that I wanted to do is to thank you, Fatma, your team, all of you, for your commitment to continuous improvement and to your dedication and your thorough preparation. I'll tell you, that padlet that Fatma shared with us is a model that I'm planning to share with other schools that I work with around the world. The way it was organized made it so easy to find everything that we needed. So without further ado, I wanted to let you know that you are part of over 35,000 schools in 80 countries around the world, using the same 30 standards, the same protocol, the same process, and you are to be commended for that, because of the work that you're doing to improve and sustain learning for your students and for stimulating not only effectiveness but efficiency throughout your organization. What we did was examine all of your evidence and the analyses that you provided, and to gather that firsthand information in order for us to provide the feedback to your institution that helps to focus and guide your improvement journey. I wanted to make sure you know that there are several areas of noteworthy practice that we noted, and the first one that we want to highlight is directly tied to your mission and vision, that exceptional learning environments empower every student to succeed in life, both today and in the future, and that you put students first with your vision of inspire, educate, and celebrate. Learner well-being is at the center of every decision that's made in this district. That came through loud and clear. And let me tell you some of the evidence that we noted. First of all, that strategic plan that you have for DEI, for diversity, equity, and inclusion, where 60% of your students are English, as their second language learners, and the fact that you have 30% of your staff who are already ESL certified, and you've built into that process a tuition reimbursement so that other staff members can obtain that ESL credential. The other point that I wanted to make sure you're aware of, that let us know that learner well-being is at the center of every decision you make, is your MTSS structure, your multi-tiered system of support, that includes both the academic and the affective, which is so important post-COVID. And just to point out some of those things that you currently have in place, mindfulness, hassles, cognitive behavior therapy, just to name a few, and that Leader in Need program where you have students who are engaged in goal setting, that's another phenomenal piece that you have in place. And the way you use stakeholder feedback as part of your long-range planning, these are all indications that learner well-being is the center of what you do. Those PLC structures for staff to engage in conversations around classroom practice, your universal preschool, your summer learning loss program that is so proactive to make sure that you're not just intervening and providing remediation, but providing acceleration for your students. And the way that you're now currently aligned with the state's MYKIP plan, all of these tell us, as regional accreditation evaluators, learner well-being is at the center of every decision you make. The second thing that I wanted to bring to your attention, that's also an area of excellence and a noteworthy practice, you've carefully crafted several leadership structures and processes that drive continuous improvement in the district, and you don't see this everywhere. The first one, of course, is your CNA, your Comprehensive Needs Assessment, where your district leadership teams engage in data analysis and synthesis, and that is used to guide the development of your school improvement goals, your activities, providing a data story for every one of the buildings in your district. Another structure that you have in place is that feeder system, where you have three traps for assuring consistency and clarity of focus and the equitable allocation of resources. You should be very proud of that. Not every place has that. The other thing is your Grow Your Own philosophy. That's extremely impressive. Your aspiring administrative program, and the way you partner with so many businesses and universities, providing interns, making sure that your students have employable skills when they leave you, and growing your own future teachers, especially in this very highly competitive environment that we live in, with that early college program that you have. Another one is that Dearborn Activity Implementation Tool that you have in place, assuring rigor in the curriculum. And your technology plan is also impressive, the way it's connected to your strategic plan, it's connected to curriculum alignment, it's assuring technology integration, collaboration, and rigor, and personalization, and choice. Your last review recommended an aligned curriculum, and what we were so impressed with is now you have processes in place for assuring alignment with national and technology standards, making sure it's integrated into classroom practice. You also have an outstanding learning environment SIP walkthrough tool, of which you should be very proud, and it's geared toward technology integration as well. The next thing that I wanted to commend you on, another noteworthy area of practice, is that your leadership ensures that learners pursue individual goals, acquiring academic and non-academic skills that are crucial for their educational futures and careers. One of the things that we noted is that in your last review, it recommended an expansion of the opportunities for students, and now you have a plethora of opportunities for students preparing for their futures. You have that universal preschool, you have several early college programs, you have a multitude of partnerships with Wayne State University, Henry Ford Community College, the University of Dearborn. You have partnerships with businesses that all of these things, pardon? All of these things train your future teachers and help them to acquire college credits and employability skills so that your students can be hired right out of school. The other thing that we noted is the way you track your graduates with those $15 million scholarships that your class of 2022 received, and the way you track them six months later to see how they're doing. All of those things suggest, not suggest, they are evidence that you are making sure your students are acquiring the skills that they need. We also noted that 75% of your English language students did not make adequate growth, but what you put into place were all kinds of acceleration and interventions to help close that gap. You have an emphasis on acceleration instead of remediation, making sure that you have tier one more than just intervention. The other thing is, then I've seen this in a lot of STEM schools, because I work in other states as well and other countries. You have those My Learning Plans that I see a lot in other places, but the way you've incorporated them throughout your district is really impressive. You've incorporated STEAM into your curriculum in response to that earlier review, and that SIP, Learning Environment Walkthrough Tool, where you have students engage in goal setting there as well. Now, we are making some suggestions that we want to have you take a look at, and some of these actually were part of your plan to begin. We're suggesting that you align your stakeholder perceptions with the criterion analysis that's already part of your learner observation tool. We noted that it's undergoing some revision based on stakeholder feedback from your teachers. You currently have annual surveys of your staff, students, and your communities indicating high levels of satisfaction, that you have respectful, welcoming, warm, and safe environments. But the question that we were asking is, what do teachers say is happening in classrooms? What do students say is happening in classrooms? And what do parents say is happening? And how do these perceptions compare? And are they in alignment? Do teachers and students both say, yes, we're engaged in project-based learning? Yes, we're engaged in collaboration? Those are just some questions you might want to consider. We noted that student engagement is on your SIP Learning Environment Walkthrough Tool, and it's very learner-centric, and this fits quite nicely with that. Another suggestion, and this was new in the standards this year, but it fits also with the collaboration and legality of Standards 5 and 6, is what's called action research, and you are poised to do that because of your sophistication. You currently have PLC structures in place and are working to strengthen those, we noticed. You have that CNA structure in place, and we're suggesting that as they meet and work together to discuss classroom practices, strengths, and challenges, maybe add some data points to determine, through their collaboration and their conversations, if it's having an impact on student learning and engagement, kind of setting where we are with a benchmark as far as student engagement and student achievement, and setting some intended outcomes. It's not something that we prescribe, something that you as a staff would make that determination, what it might look like. Another area is that we're suggesting that you assure the measurement of student engagement during your classroom observation. One of the things, and I've been doing this for a long time, I've been working with Cognia probably for over 20 years, and the standards this year, I think, are so much more sophisticated. As you look at the ones through the key characteristic of engagement, Standards 16 through 23, you'll notice that they have words like diversity and equity, and lifelong skills of creativity, curiosity, risk-taking, and collaboration, student voice and responsibility, self-confidence and love of learning, and digital resource integration, as just a few. Your tool is currently undergoing some revision, slight revision. You have some outstanding criteria that impact achievement, and it's aligned with your strategic plan. You look at learning targets, questioning techniques, digital tools, and you're working on creating an even stronger alignment between the tool and your plan. So we're just suggesting that you might want to think about some of those words like diversity and equity as you engage, continue in your continuous improvement work. The last thing we're going to suggest, and this actually came from you, to evaluate your instructional programs, leveraging those that have the highest impact on student learning. We noticed that in one of your themes for improvement, you said you wanted to have systemic evaluation of all of your programs. You currently have that Dearborn Activity Implementation Tool in place, and you have that SIP Learning Environment Tool that's for strategic implementation, and this was identified as an area for improvement, evaluating all your instructional programs to leverage those that have the greatest impact. What we noted is, wow, you have a lot of things taking place in your district, leadership development, student performance, learning environment observations, the use of stakeholder feedback, your academic and affective interventions, your PLC structures, your SIP walkthrough tool, your numerous student opportunities, and your curriculum and technology alignment. What we're suggesting is that you want to make sure you measure, 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 measure. What kind of impact are they having on engagement and achievement? And you probably have a lot of that in place. I wanted to let you know that this just is a snapshot of what the big report will look like, and it will go in within 10 days, and you'll have the report, the final report, in about 30 days. It compares you to all of the standards, just as you did yourself, and it gives you what's called an Index of Education Quality that shares with you where you are in comparison to some other schools that are going through the process as well. And I wanted to let you know that if you have any questions about the report, please contact me, please, please, please. I'm happy to be of service to you. And of course, Michael Noss, who is with me this evening as well, he's another person that you can meet with. And as you know, knowledge is opportunity, and the way you are engaged in that process, you are to be commended. I wanted to stop the share, and I wanted to congratulate all of you for engaging in this process, and I want to thank you again for your commitment to continuous improvement, and tell you what a pleasure it's been working with all of you.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions from the board? Trustee Barry?
Yes, thank you. If our buildings weren't over capacity, I would say, I would tell David, put this report out as a commercial. But thank you for the report. I'm a big fan of tooting your own horn, telling your story, whatever you want to call it.
Definitely, if you would allow me. My name is Michael Noss, and I'm the state director here in Michigan for Cognia, and I just want to acknowledge Dr. Lico and your dedicated team, and the work that you do to set such a very high bar for accreditation in the state of Michigan. And know that your partnership with Dearborn Schools, we very much appreciate that, and that your district's success is acknowledged throughout our state and across our Cognia organization. We very much appreciate working with you, and we get better because you're getting better. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Barry.
I should have asked like you did, Dr. Stevens, can you hear us? There's your problem.
She's muted, looks like.
Give us a thumbs up if you can hear us. Dr. Stevens, can you hear us? Give us a thumbs up if you can hear us. Okay, thank you very much. I'm not going to repeat my joke, because some people here don't think I'm funny, so moving forward. Okay, thank, 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 got it, got it. I appreciate it. Thank, thank, thank you for telling me. So you mentioned, you mentioned that stakeholder feedback, but then there are areas of improvements. I don't know if you can elaborate on that now, or should we wait for the report? If we can ask this question. You said align stakeholder perceptions with the criterion analysis. This comes under standard three. Are you at the liberty of elaborating on that now? What caused you to say this needs some, obviously, you can always improve in every department, but why here? Why did you say that here?
Kinds of stakeholder feedback, and you use the perception feedback exceptionally well. The recommendation is simply that you use feedback regarding classroom practice, very, very specifically, classroom practice. I'm going to share with you what I heard at an international conference for Cognia, where the schools that have been using Elliott for a long, 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 long time, ever since it started, probably six, eight years ago, where they asked teachers, what kinds of things are going on in your classroom? And teachers said, our students are engaged in collaborative work. And when they asked the students the exact same question, what they found is, we listen to our teachers. So it's important, as you're engaged in using your SIP tool, which is a wonderful tool, to perhaps incorporate something like that, to ask teachers the kinds of activities in which they're engaged, ask the students what they're engaged in, what the parents are saying, and then do a comparison. That's the suggestion. We know that your environment is outstanding. It's warm, it's safe, it's respectful. We're just suggesting that you might want to dig a little bit deeper into classroom practices to see what kinds of comparisons are being made among your stakeholders.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for the presentation. We look forward to the next steps.
Next, First Budget Amendment, 2022, 2023, Mr. Thomas Wall.
Thank you. Good evening again. I see there's three-minute citizen participation, so I don't know if I want me to follow that one or not, it's going to count down on me. As required every year, when we have a substantial change in our budget, we should be doing a budget amendment, and we usually do it at least twice a year, once in January, when we know what a final state aid is and what our student enrollment is. So this is our typical format. So I'm not going to read, obviously, the screens, but this is just kind of a highlight of our budgetary numbers, of all the numbers that, how many schools we have, what the budget is for all funds, the students, and our percentages that come into play of why our budget is the way it is. I always, again, like sharing this screen. This kind of shows the buckets in a visual approach, with the most restrictive on the right-hand side and the least restrictive on the left-hand side. So our philosophy has always been to work from right to left when we set up budgets, which really means our general fund, which our most versatile fund, is where we spend a lot of our operation expenses that aren't covered in the other areas. So some of the significant changes, we received $450 increase in our foundation per pupil pool this year. We estimate around $430 originally in the original budget. That is roughly about a 4.7% increase, based, you know, with inflation. We have our levies, and we'll go more into the levies about that, about our home harmless and non-home, our operating villages. The increase in our foundation allowance had a direct tie to our bargaining contract with our union, so they got, you know, an equal increase in the compensation based upon our state revenue. And again, you know, dealing with all the things, we've seen a lot of increases. One of the big things we saw in the last year was absenteeism. Obviously, with the pandemic, people being off and health issues, we've seen a significant rise in that. You know, we were around $1.1 million before the pandemic, our absentee costs are now up to $5.4 million. It's not just absenteeism, but also we had to raise our costs like everybody else in the area due to staff shortages, so we had to have a higher fee to be able to retain our substitutes working for us in our district. And obviously, the SRT3 funds. So this is the year we're using our operational side of our SRT3 funds, and that's included in the budget. So we always want to look at the three big items, so taxable values, that increased 3.4% this year. We had adjustment for our hold harmless village, which we'll get into a little more later. Our foundation allowance has increased, obviously, the $450, as I mentioned earlier. Our student counts, we did not get the student counts we expected. We roughly estimated about a 392 student increase, and we actually resulted in a 170 student decrease, and those are representative in this budget. And also, we have some new grants that were given to us, roughly about $2.2 million in safety and security, that was issued by the state back in August when they adopted the state aid, but we just got the information that we, how much we were going to spend in February. So obviously, that was our included, not included in this budget, because it wasn't included, what numbers we were going to get, and how we're going to spend it, and the requirements. So you'll see that in the second amendment as we go forward through the year. So just kind of a quick visual of our state aid revenue history, going all the way back to 2011, 12. As you can see, the blue line is the actual dollar value, and the yellow slash orange line is actual based upon the rate of inflation. So even though we're getting more money, you can see that the rate of inflation, our money isn't worth as much. So you always got to be cognizant of that actual dollar value as we go forward. It might be bigger numbers, but it actually doesn't go as far as we would like based upon inflation. This is just a pie for reference of where our state aid money comes from. Majority of it does come from state use tax. You remember passing a proposal, A, a 2% increase in sales tax was approved by the voters to actually help fund the state aid. We also have the individual income tax. A portion of the income tax goes to our state aid pie. And the last part is the six mills that are from, you know, the everybody's state to help fund state aid also. And there's a lot of smaller parts. The only one I always like to point out is the lottery. Even though 100% of the proceeds go to the state aid fund, it only makes up roughly about 3% of our total budget. When looking at the school budget, three items, staffing is obviously one of our biggest items, that makes up 80, 85% of our budget annually, and that 4.7% increase in our state aid actually also went to the staff on a reciprocal basis. The instructional program, we went back to the traditional program. We do have a virtual school this year, and this is the second year of that program, but most kids are in the traditional program. And infrastructure, we obviously put aside a lot of money for our infrastructure program this current year, with money also from the SRT3 funds. That SRT3 funds will be spent over the next couple of years, but the rest of S3 this year. So, and we're also looking at the finalization of the purchase of the HFC buildings for the early college, to give them room now and for expansion later. And we've had a lot of claims that happened this year. We had a lot of frozen pipes in December that are included in here, and the floods from back of June of '21. Some of those costs are actually coming through now because they took so long to order the parts and get them repaired, so we see a large increase for that. So this is the look at the militaries. This is the L4029 that we do every year. If you look at where letter A in red is, that's our hold harmless village. We'll go into that a little bit more in just a second. And then the debt village of 3.5 mills, which is Area B. Those are the ones that get voted on by the voters every 10 years, and that one's coming up in '24, right? So we'll be seeing that one in next year about how to go about and renew those villages and what they mean. This chart is from one of our programs, Munit Trex, where it shows our actual levy. You can see the light blue on the bottom, that is the hold harmless village. You can see that in '22, '23 school year, that actually is gone. So when they passed the funding for this school year, or actually, last school year, they gave us another 400 roughly number increase in August, September, when they approved the budget. Well, when it got to this Department of Treasury, they found out there's a little caveat hidden in the law, and they told us about it in October, that said we could not continue to levy the hold harmless village at the same level if we want to get the full increase in our foundation allowance. So they required us to lower a levy, hold harmless village, in October of '21. Unfortunately, majority of our tax base comes from the city of Dearborn, and we have a 100% levy in the summer. So by that point, we've already collected all our funds for that summer, and they gave us several options of how to correct that issue, and one of them was to refund the money. Well, unfortunately, I don't think I want to write a check to 1,000 households of a little bit of money for that. So one of the options they allowed us is for the following year, this current year, '22, '23, not levy that. and basically give a refund back to the taxpayers by not paying that tax for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So it's not a voted issue. It was a statement, Department of Treasury on the authorization of what mills we can levy based upon the State Aid Act. As you can see, there's nothing in there for twenty-two, twenty-three. Going forward to twenty-three, twenty-four, the calculation will be determined again. It'll be much less than the six point one seven mills, anywhere between three to four mills. And that'll be based upon our student enrollment and our tax base because the formula is taking a certain dollar value of three hundred thirteen dollars. Previously, it was five ninety-three, with the reduction went down to three thirteen, times the number of students divided by our tax base. So that'll determine how we determine what the actual mileage rate will be. And that's form, we turn it into the state Department of Treasury every year, and they approve it. And that's how we determine the hold harmless mileage. I know we might have more questions on that, so do you want to ask those now, or do you want to wait?
I would love to ask them.
Okay, go ahead.
If you don't mind.
Trustee Barry?
So without going back to nineteen ninety-three, no hold harm, you know, proposal A in rich districts and poor districts, without that history, to ninety-nine percent of the people listening to us, what is the hold harmless?
So without going to a long history.
Without, no, no, no need for that.
So back when they originally approved proposal A, they took a look at all the revenue a district was levying. And they said anything over a certain dollar threshold, I think was like five thousand dollars back then, you can levy additional mileage to make sure you don't have a change in your revenue from that year to the next year. And so that number is carried forward over time, and so that's what the hold harmless mileage comes up.
So Dearborn was one of those.
Hold harmless districts.
Hold harmless, meaning it was a rich district, means like decades ago, every time, uh, the Dearborn Public Schools needed money, they would go to taxpayers, and the taxpayers understood that you're investing in education, helps your property values, and, you know, spending money on students. So with proposal A, the way I understand it, uh, not wanting to hurt districts like ours and others nearby, that's where that came up from.
Correct, and that's roughly about eleven million dollars for us annual basis.
For us, yeah. So last year, what I, what I heard you say is that it was an advantage for us to take that per pupil funding. But we already collected the hold harmless.
Correct.
And that's why this shows zero right here.
Right.
Okay, so there was no tax break or tax cut or anything like that. Reason I'm asking is because eventually, most likely this coming year, we're probably going to be asking not for the full six point one two seven, whatever.
Six point one seven.
Six point one seven, I knew there was a seven in there. But we might ask for a portion of that depending on what the per pupil. Moving forward, that's something that's passed by the taxpayers a while back.
Correct, it's done, I think, in Dearborn every ten years we have.
Yeah, I know it's coming up.
It's coming up again.
It's going to be coming up next year. So once we go ahead and make the decision that we're going to go out to, for, let's say, for example, three point six mills to kind of offset what we're not getting back, that's not a tax increase by Dearborn Public Schools.
Correct, it's going to be putting back into place that to handle that change in state aid for that twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Okay, just want to make sure it was out there that there was no tax cut last year. It was just, you know, your decision, and we all trust you here, right? And you said it was, I remember in finance, you said it's more advantage for us to take the per pupil money.
Correct, because that money stays forever in our foundation allowance, which is better for us long term.
Okay, and hopefully, the ninety-nine percent that didn't understand, at least now, at least five percent understand it. And if you have any questions, I'll post, I'll post your phone number on that.
That's all right. I'll transfer it to your account.
I'm just joking, but no, thank you. Thank you for the work you do because this is not easy stuff. And when people hear this and that, and there's some, some narratives out there, out there just to confuse people, that's wrong too. But I, and I'm sure all of us appreciate what you do, thank you.
I, I get several phone calls every year around tax time when the millages come out, and I sit down and work it through with the, you know, the, the community members that ask, make sure they understand it.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, because if anyone just looks again at this year, it will look like an increase, but it's because we had to pay back what was from the previous year.
Correct. Now, the other thing on there, you'll see in the green is the debt mileage. Right now, we're levying three point five mills from debt. Uh, two years ago is four point eight two. Last year, it dropped to three point five, this year is three point five. After this year, the two thousand two mills go away, and the debt mileage will actually go down to one point three mills. That's what it's estimated at. Obviously, we don't know what our taxable value is at for this upcoming year, but you'll see. So it's going to be a kind of two factors that are going to determine what our new rate will be next year. So it's going to even be more confusing as our hold harmless mileage will go up, but our debt rate will go down. So unless you actually look at your tax bill and look at the individual lines, you'll kind of get confused again what, what changed on there. So we'll cover this again as we do our budget amendment or budget adoption for twenty-three, twenty-four. We'll go through this again as much as we need to, to make sure people understand.
Just to give you a heads up, our taxable value is going the other direction. Just FYI.
So, yeah, it could go up or down, it all depends, and we don't control those values, those are determined by the city.
What we're seeing, yeah.
Yes. All right, again, this is just showing our foundation allowance as it's been increasing, just kind of give a visual of that. And again, you know, obviously, our student counts are very important. Just giving you the student counts, we're done twice a year, once in the fall, which is ninety percent, and the winter in the previous year at ten percent, ninety percent in the fall, ten percent in the spring, make sure I said that right. And so it's based on a calendar year, basically. So the calendar winter count in twenty-three and the summer account, or the fall account in twenty-three will be for next year's twenty-three, twenty-four. This is just looking at the S R funds. As you can see, we spent most of this fund. So if you look at the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, that we're spending S R three funds. All the other S R funds in the district have been spent and accounted for. And this is just showing you the different funds that we have that we showed in the pictorial. We'll go into a lot of detail before that, but for those that like numbers, they can look into and see which of our funds and how much they are for all that. This just breaks down the general fund because the general fund has the general fund, the enhancement mileage that we get from the county, and athletics is all in that general fund number. And those that really want to get more into it, this is the special revenue funds that are grant funded. They have their own revenue source, so the expenditures follow that, so just so you're aware of that. And so key issues going forward, obviously, staffing issues. Uh, that's something we look at every year, it's a big part of it since that's a majority part of our budget. And we have to be careful of staff shortages. So, uh, also, we got to obviously monitor and close out this current year. Uh, the fall instructional program is basically still going to be on a traditional format. I think the, the pandemic versatility, what we had to do before is kind of hopefully gone. And we'll be looking at staffing adjustments because we're in negotiations this year. Obviously, all our contracts expire at the end of this year for our union contracts. So that'll be a big piece of, you know, kind of estimating unknown until we get those contracts settled. And obviously, infrastructure. I can't speak enough, I think this is the number one issue that we're going to be facing the next couple of years is how to, what we're going to do with our infrastructure. Because the more and more we wait and longer, the prices get higher, our buildings continue to be maintained, but some of them is just age, and they're going to need to be addressed. We might have more issues of schools closings because of electrical issue, because of plumbing issue. Those are the things that we're going to start dealing with that really have to focus on and figure out how to have a long-term plan. As you're aware of, we have Building International working with us on that. Um, I believe we have a study session later this month. Uh, we originally expect it to be done in March, but I think everybody's asking for more input from the public. So it will be at least until April till we get a more general idea of where we're headed with all that. And that's it. Any questions, additional questions?
Trustee Moser.
Yeah, I had a question about the number, um, for the, you said that it's going to be determined sometimes later as far as the, uh, hold harmless. When, when, when is that?
So the taxable values are supposed to be out in March from the county, but Wayne County is very complicated, so we don't usually see those until mid to late May.
Okay.
So once we get those numbers and we have a, uh, estimate of what our pupil count is going to be, then we can determine the mileage rates. So usually by June first, I send something to the state showing what our estimated revenue or millages are going to be, and that'll be part of the budget approval process. So you'll see it in the first meeting in June, the estimates, and then final approval in the second meeting in June when we adopt the budget.
Okay.
Because they usually come out early May, but they get readjusted, adjusted, and adjusted, and adjusted till we got the number we're going to have to use, yes.
And I have a second question about the, the EPA grant that we got for the buses. That's not reflected on this year's budget.
No, no, not yet. We don't even have our award letter yet, we have the email approval of it, and they said use that until we get the award letter. Um, that is going to be for seven point one million dollars for eighteen buses. Uh, we had a conversation today at the building and site meeting to talk more about that because the buses had to be ordered in April, so you'll probably see the bus purchase in April. Uh, there's obviously a large infrastructure side that's going to cost a lot of money to figure. And they're estimating that out of that four hundred thousand dollar per bus, that twenty-five thousand can be used for infrastructure. That is going to be nowhere near enough to be able to handle that. So that's what we were starting our discussions with at the building and site committee today.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for Mr. Wall? Thank you very much.
Thank you.